Here.
We can rise for the pledge.
Presidential comments?
I think it's been said annually, but stay off the ponds and such because it's, they're not frozen all the way through. That's all I got.
Trustees' comments?
I have two comments related to Mayor Collins' comments about the weather. Chief, could you give us and the audience an update on warming centers in the cold weather?
As Trustee Fay pointed out, over the next several days after the snowstorm tonight, we are anticipating having some dangerously cold wind chills and cold temperatures. In the event that anyone in the village or in the area needs a warming center, we do have resources available at the police department. All they would need to do is come there or call ahead and we can make resources available. If people are watching this outside of the Village of Plainfield, there are other resources in other communities nearby as well, but if someone in the village needs a warming center, for whatever reason, they just need to either come or call to the police department.
Thank you. And the second one, Alan, if you want to wait for your report or such time in the meeting, that would be more appropriate. I understand that the price of fuel is pretty low right now. Do we have plans to purchase in bulk?
Yes. I'll answer that just briefly. As part of the fueling station, we already do receive a discount. It's typically between 50 cents and a dollar a gallon. And back when we moved into the facility, I can remember when we were paying a dollar a gallon, which was an outstanding deal. It went up since then. I think our last invoice, we were at about a dollar sixty, a dollar fifty, but as gas prices continue to reduce, we do see that additional savings. Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, just to carry on, Trustee Fay, when, if they call you, the police department, they're from out of the village, is there a number they're referred to or is it an area they're referred to?
If they call the police department number, it will be, go to our dispatch and our dispatch has been advised to contact either myself or Commander Ruggles and then we'll make arrangements. Depending on what the circumstances are, we'll make arrangements to either open up an area of the police department where they can seek shelter or, again, depending on the circumstance, we'll work with the people to make sure they have some type of shelter.
Are there, are there any other trustee comments? Now, this would be the time for public comments, three to five minutes. There are no public comments and we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on December 15th. Bills paid and bills payable reports for January 5th. Ordinance number 3198 amending the Class S liquor license classification.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through C under the consent agenda. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Adventist Healthcare Sign Variants. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3199 granting approval for a sign variance to permit a ground monument sign of up to 15 feet in height and 64 square feet in sign area at 15728 South Route 59. The motion was made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Yeah, I'd bring up the point I did in last week. Up to 15 feet is fine. In this particular case, I'd like to see all the signs about the same height. And that's probably more like 13 feet from this particular location. The 15 came into place because of Burger King, which is now Hardee's. They were like five feet down in the road. Where this particular sign will go is only one foot down from 59. So if we don't have to go to 15 feet, I'd appreciate it. They do need the bigger sign. They need more visibility. I think the bigger sign and not so high would be beneficial, although we're about to pass that they have 15, up to 15 feet. But they don't have to do 15 feet. They can go 13.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3199 granting approval for a sign variant, variance for Adventist Healthcare. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Crash Champions. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing regarding a stormwater variance for Crash Champions Auto Body Shop and to continue the public hearing to a special meeting scheduled for January 12th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Vintage Harvest Commercial. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance approving a variance for the height and square footage of, for a monument sign located at the Vintage Harvest Retail Center on Route 59.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Again, one comment. This sign is sorely needed, this particular location. It's obviously better than no sign, but it could be bigger if it's really going to represent the entire develop, or entire shopping area that's really recessed from 59. So if they're happy with this, fine, but if they wanted to go bigger, I think it might be worth them considering because once you put the sign in, you're not going to change it. They have a lot of names on that one sign.
Yes, the applicant again has identified a 15-foot sign and with 100 square feet, that's perhaps the biggest change is just simply the square footage. But you've identified the big issue here is it's a visibility issue because the center is over five, almost 500 feet setback from Route 59. There truly is a visibility issue. We have, the applicant is a new owner and is trying to address the current vacancy, vacancies that currently exist in that center. So we, they think there is an opportunity here with the signage to address some of the economic development issues here.
It is important. 15 feet's a good height, but they got a lot of stores they want to advertise and talking about very small space for those and that may not be adequate, but that's just a suggestion on my part.
Question for Trustee Lamb. Is there something you recommend maybe we can offer with our, with this item tonight, possibly a different motion, a second, that would allow them more latitude to accomplish what you're describing?
The applicant is actually here this evening. So if Angelo would like to come up perhaps and address that, Mr. Ramos.
My name's Angelo Ramos. I'm the, one of the principals in the Vintage Harvest LLC. My partner Bob Soho is here. He was at the zoning board meeting. The, we met with Michael and we discussed the size of this, this sign and it is, it is going to be an issue. It has been an issue already. We've made certain improvements in the center and the biggest pratfall of the center is people trying to find it. And, and we've had some people back away because, because of the fact that it's set back. So if there is any latitude, if we had to make it a little bit larger, you know, I'd certainly consider that and welcome it. We came up with a design, but if we had a little, little more room and a little more square footage, we'd certainly take advantage of that if we could.
And to answer Trustee Peck's question, I would recommend 15 feet in height, which is consistent with what we're doing along 59, but 150 square feet instead of 100.
That'd be great.
Somebody have to amend their motion if we're going to do that.
If that.
Who made the motion?
I repeal the first motion to make a motion that this sign variance not exceed 150 square feet.
Second.
Thank you very much.
The motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance approving a variance for the site, for the height and square footage for a monument sign located at Vintage Harvest Retail Center on 59 not to exceed 150 square feet. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Ross Variance. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance granting a variance for wall signage at the proposed Ross store located on Route 59 and 127th Street.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Unfortunately, yeah. I think the front sign facing 59 is excellent. The bigger the better. I, not so sure I understand the logic behind having the, the sign facing 127th Street being that large. Only people are really going to see it are people exiting Walmart and I hope they pay attention to the traffic. That's a darn difficult place to get out of. So if, the space is there for the sign, so I can't really object to it, but I prefer they put in something smaller because the front sign is really what's going to make a difference. People can see that from 59. People see it coming down 127. You know, they're right at the edge of the shopping center. So I, I just suggest that. I think we will end up, well, we're proving it somehow, but I would prefer that they make that northern, northern sign small.
Yeah, again.
Maybe just Ross. I looked at the one in Crystal Lake a couple of days ago and they have the big sign in front, just like we're proposing. They just have Ross on the side. Now, it's not the same type of location, but it was adequate for that building. So I would, I would recommend that.
I think the applicant has identified that they think again, 127th Street through there basically has a fairly good traffic count and visibility. It's also important on, on the northern elevation. And moreover, they're trying to mirror a, a similar sized sign that was approved for Barnes and Noble. As you recall, the Barnes and Noble did have signage facing the north. I'm not sure the applicant is actually here this evening. So the applicant is actually here. So perhaps they could clarify or provide some additional illumination specifically for the actual justification for the northern signage or for the relief that they're asking for. Again, they're asking for 210 square feet on the northern elevation. We, as per code, we allow 165 square feet. The Barnes and Noble sign was actually exceeded that, but that was as part of the original planned development. So the applicants actually here this evening, if they like to, perhaps answer any questions or provide any additional illumination or information pertaining to this signage on the northern elevation?
I throw all the way out here, I might as well say something. I'm Chuck Zen with North Shore Signs out of Libertyville and we do some of the Ross locations throughout the Chicagoland and I'm here to answer your questions. We went through the first board and we, we agreed on a, on a certain sized sign. That was not the first drawing we came up with. That's the second drawing. We did make it smaller. Okay? At first, Ross, Ross Corporate wanted a very large sign and it was pushing the envelope of the sign square, the available sign area. And I thought it looked cluttered. So that's what we suggested, you know, sort of an agreement, association. So we made that sign smaller and you're seeing the result of what we did. It was pretty big and busy to begin with because of relatively small space. But we do feel we have good visibility on 127th and it's a workable sign. Also, I'll tell you, the first time I was here, I visited that store was in the summer and there was a lot of vegetation along that side and in the front. A lot of vegetation in that particular shopping center. So, you know, we feel the sign will, will cut through that. And as far as what you said about Crystal Lake with the word Ross on the side, they did approach me at first, the Ross people. They wanted a sign on their rear wall. And I went out, looked at it and I said, no, you don't need a sign on the rear wall. All this is loading dock and you can't see it in the summer because, you know, there's vegetation blocking it. Put your money on the side sign. You have a longer distance that it could be seen from. So we feel the side sign takes care of anything that we need on the rear. So we did think about that.
I appreciate your coming down and making.
There's any questions?
I have a question, but.
We did negotiate on it.
Actually, the question I have is what Mr. Gary had asked. Is that northern sign going to be lit or is it just going to be?
Yes, it is going to be lit. They're all going to be lit. Blue, it's going to light blue at night.
At background, lining the letters or?
Letters, yeah, face lit.
Okay.
Every other Ross in, in the Chicago area. Same color, same, same, same all.
I appreciate your coming down. I was also at the plan commission when you, you have a very learned discussion of signs and so.
Oh, yeah.
That was very informative, so.
Let me start it. I can't stop.
You obviously do a good job of it. So thank you.
Just for asking, sir, is this also to draw the, the exit from 126, or excuse me, 127th from Walmart?
Well, primarily to get anybody that's on 127th. Kind of to help the front sign because you can't always see the front sign because of the building in front. It's, it's long setback. And again, there's a lot of vegetation there. Some, I, I think that has to do with ordinances because not all shopping centers have that, but like for instance, Schaumburg does. You go to one of the centers there in the middle of summer and you can't really see the signs because there's certain ordinances for trees. So we feel that whatever we have on the north elevation will kind of help the side, the, the front elevation, at least for southbound traffic. So we're hoping not only Walmart people see it, but everyone sees it.
I think if you're coming down 159 too, it's, it's helpful if you're driving, especially because it's a fairly fast road to be able to look up and see that's 127th Street. Someone unfamiliar with Plainfield wouldn't necessarily know it's 127th, but would see the sign. I can appreciate Trustee Lamb is trying to keep, you know, obviously the, the signage looking good and everything, but I would support that sign on the side and that size. I just think that, that's an anchor building for that strip area. So I think, I think it's fine.
This is the state of an art sign. This is what, you know, is done nowadays. It doesn't flash. It doesn't, you know, move. It's got LED illumination behind blue plastic. That's the best we can do. You know, it's not a box sign. It's individual letters. This is what everybody does nowadays. So it's, it's modern. It's going to fit right in. Nothing retro or cheap about it.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance granting a variance for wall signage at the proposed Ross store located on Route 59 and 127th Street. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Administrator's report?
Keeping on the theme of the weather, there were a few garbage and recycling routes that were missed today. Waste management had some struggles with their equipment. Trustee Peck is nodding because one of those routes was his neighborhood. We will be in tomorrow. For those of you that were missed, I say we, Waste Management assures us that they will be in tomorrow to pick up those routes that were missed. So if you are a Monday route and your route was not picked up, we know of it. There was one garbage route and two recycling routes that were missed and they will be collected tomorrow. Yeah, right. I'll leave that one alone. So tomorrow, we'll be around your neighborhood.
Management Services report?
Thank you. In my report, I have seven resolutions. That comes before the board on an annual basis to abate, or otherwise known as eliminate, the 2014 property tax levy for the village's outstanding general obligation bonds. And the seven are listed under my report. These historically get abated annually. If they are not eliminated by virtue of resolution approved through the board, the property taxes will be passed on to the village residence property tax bill. Annual debt service for these seven issues are just over 4.7, almost 4.8 million. In the event the resolutions are not approved, the county clerk's offices will extend the property tax levies for each of the bonds series listed, which means it would almost double the village portion of a residence property tax bill. The nature by which the general obligation bonds are set up through the bond ordinances requires that in the event the village cannot make payments on their debt service annually, they will be extended and rolled to the residence tax bill. Every year, the village has abated these ordinance or resolutions and sent them to the, to the county clerk's offices so they will not be levied to the residents and the property owners' tax bills. These principal and interest payments are included in the proposed budget for next fiscal year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for any of these issues.
I would make a motion, we vote through omnibus vote for these resolutions.
Second, if we can, if we do all once.
Yep.
Let's do it.
The motion was made and seconded to vote for the resolutions for the obligation bonds as omnibus vote. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion.
Just a, one second. Don't we have to have a number, one through resolution number?
I'm doing that right now, sir. We're seeking a motion to adopt resolutions number 1697 through 1703, abating the 2014 tax levies for the general obligation bonds or general obligation refunding bonds, Series 205A, Series 205B, Series 2007, Series 2010, Series 2012, Series 2013, and Series 2014.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the resolutions. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Thank you. That motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Engineers' report?
No report this evening.
Planning Department report? Building Department report?
Just the operations report for December. Be happy to answer any questions.
Congratulations on delivering a great December.
Thank you.
Nice improvement from last year.
Thank you.
Public Works report?
And how many total?
Police Chiefs report?
Excuse me, one second. I, I would be remiss if I didn't have something to say at a meeting, a lengthy discussion. Alan, I read in the newspaper by, it was a small article in regard to salt usage and savings to the Village of Plainfield. It was pretty remarkable. A quiet November and December. We're off to sort of a, a cold beginning in January, but it appears if we go along with December and January, we'll have salt for next year, won't we?
Yes. And, you know, we did deserve a reprieve after last year. When, when we look back at last year, there were over 36 events, you know, 4,500 tons of salt. I mean, it was a, just a really brutal year last year. And so we're glad to see the beginning of this, this winter season and we're really theoretically halfway through, has been uneventful. So we're pleased to see that. And there is a savings to the residents related to that too as well. So we're looking forward to a nice, quiet next three months.
That'd be great. It's interesting, obviously, because of your ability and the department's ability to track, track what has happened. 11 events last year and only one this year. That's, that's really remarkable. And I'm glad that you, that someone contacted you in order to publicize that because oftentimes people forget about what has happened in the past and what's currently happening right now. But good reporting and thank you.
Sadly, whenever Alan says that things are going to be fine, we usually end up with Armageddon afterward. But joking aside, actually, I, I do want to point out to our residents as well, you very well likely will not see us laying down salt this week. And why would that be, Mr. Persons?
In the colder temperatures, when it gets down into this range that we're at right now and even colder, the salt really becomes ineffective. So sand is more effective to provide traction out there too as well and that the conservation of salt is important, especially when it, it really doesn't serve any purpose at, at these temperatures. But that being said, and even with the comments before, we are ready for a big storm or any storm in that case. And the crew is, is ready for the storm this evening and we're already in the split shifts. So we're ready to take on anything that, basically, I shouldn't say that in front of the chief here, any normal storm that Mother Nature can throws at us and, and even a little bit more, we're ready to handle it. So, thank you.
You will be plowing, of course. Laying down salt, as you indicated, doesn't make any sense at that temperature. But at that temperature, ice is almost like concrete as far as its ability to stop. It's only slippery when it gets closer to 30 or thereabouts when you have a little bit of water on the surface. That's when that's the problem. So.
And, you know, sunlight plays a factor into it and heating the pavement up and there are a number of different things. But we continue to monitor that and use the best available technology to take care of the roadways. As the chief may state in his report, though, to remind people in these weather conditions to drive slower, to, you know, use good common sense out there. I, I think, I think it takes us all a little bit, the first couple of storms to adjust our habits a little bit. And the main thing is to take your time and, and be safe out there.
Municipalities to the north, though, have used salt. I just drove back and the roads are white from salt. They probably need it because it was really terrible yesterday and the day before. So they took care of the slipperiness at that point, but now it wouldn't, wouldn't help them, but it's already been laid down. Do we ever get a rest of our supply, by the way, by the end of the year?
All of our salts is in, in stock. So we've, we received everything that we've paid for. In fact, Mr. Persons, they've asked if we could store some additional salt at one, at our facility while they're waiting. So we have a little bit more than what we were expected to receive.
No complaints? Great.
We're in good shape.
Thank you.
Police Chiefs report?
First of all, I wish I had the enthusiastic, enthusiastic look on that white stuff as Director Persons does, but it is winter and it is Chicago. We will have some extra personnel on tomorrow morning due to the fact this really is our first snow event of the true snow event of the year. And as we can anticipate, some people will unfortunately forget how to drive in the white stuff. So we will have some extra personnel on tomorrow morning. One other. One other item before I get to the actual agenda item, excuse me, is I'd just like to let the board know, and also the folks in attendance and watching, at the, at the end of this month, in conjunction with the Plainfield Fire District, particularly Chief Riddle, we are going to be starting a interactive community meeting, a quarterly meeting, that we're calling Chat with the Chiefs, which is, we are mimicking it off of Coffee with the Mayor type format. We're inviting the public to come out. Our first meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-eighth at seven PM at the police department. And again, it is an interactive community meeting. We're inviting the public to come out to ask us questions, police, fire, EMA, pretty much, you know, all emergency services here in the village, as far as how we operate, questions they may have about any of those disciplines. We will have safety messages that we do present at every meeting throughout the year, and we'll see, you know, how it goes as far as attendance. Initially, we're going to start it quarterly, but if attendance is, is beyond our expectations, then we may look to move it into a more frequent format. But again, that's going to be on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth at seven PM at the police department, and we will put it, put out as we get closer, reminders through social and regular, regular media as well. The one agenda item I do have is I am seeking board's consideration to purchase a vehicle for Plainfield Emergency Management, that being a Ford F-350 service body truck from Rod Baker. Also included with the emergency equipment that would go with the vehicle from Fleet Safety, and also the installation through NICS Emergency Lighting. As you're aware, many of the vehicles we have through Plainfield EMA are hand-me-downs from the police department and, and other venues, and they work very well. However, after time, those vehicles do come to the end of their life, and we have many vehicles that are well over a hundred thousand miles within Plainfield Emergency Management. This vehicle that we're requesting would give us much versatility as far as transporting equipment, transporting manpower through storm events such as winter storms, windstorms, flooding situations, and also be very useful during special events and other events that, even the smaller events, if you will, that we assist the fire department with and police department with traffic control and other services and things like that. So I am seeking board's consideration for the expenditure of fifty-one thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and three cents. Again, that would be for an F-350 from Rod Baker Ford, the emergency equipment from Fleet Safety, and the installation through NICS Emergency Lighting.
Excuse me, I move that we purchase the, the Ford F-350, the emergency equipment, other, other safety equipment is identified in the staff report.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Journeys report?
I have no report. Thank you.
Reminders?
January sixth is the planning commission. January eighth is the HPC. January the twelfth is our next committee of the whole. Our offices will be closed on the nineteenth of January, and February second will be our next regular board meeting.
We're seeking a motion to adjourn to executive session as permitted under the Open Meetings Act under section two, C three, to discuss the appointment of public official.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.